All right, good evening, everyone. It is 5:30, so we're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Looks like we have a great crowd tonight, so welcome to our August Board of Education meeting. Great to see everyone. Huge crowd, super excited, beginning the school year, so I'm looking forward to hearing a lot of your comments, and we will go ahead and call the meeting to order and start with 1.2, with our Pledge of Allegiance, and that will be led by Silvana Vasquez, one of our newest student board members. So let's go ahead and stand.
Please put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Thank you.
All right, Silvana, thank you so much for leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'll move on to 1.3, approval of the agenda.
Second.
It's moved by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Rosales Medina. Any discussion or items to be pulled? All right, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the agenda as it's drafted. I want to make sure we had the agenda approved. But right now, as you could see up here on the dais, we have three new folks, our newest board members up here, and they are our student board members. There are three of our nine, just so you know, we do have nine, so I'm going to introduce them a little bit from my left to right, your right to left, starting with Silvana Vasquez, who led us in the Pledge of Allegiance, who is a senior at San Gagonio High School. Welcome. Let's give her a round of applause. And that brings us over to Crystal Scott, Ms. Crystal Scott, who is a senior at Cajon High School. So welcome, Crystal. And our gentleman for this evening, Mr. Antonio Hernandez Nunez, who is a senior at San Gagonio High School as well. So a wonderful, warm welcome from San Jose Unified School District to our school board members. We are proud to have you here and definitely happy to have you representing our huge student body of 47,000 students. I just want to read a little bit of following, kind of explain about our board members and also the voting process with them, so everybody has a real strong and clear understanding. Moving forward to our board meeting, student board members will be able to cast preferential votes, they're called preferential votes, excluding closed session, agenda items. These preferential votes are not used in determining the final outcome vote. It is a way for the students to express their opinions on items. I'll go into further detail on how the voting will be done as we move through the agenda. In addition, because this is a school night, our student members will leave around 9:00 PM each board meeting, because we want them to be a part of the meeting as much as possible, but we ask everybody to buy by time limits, as we need to be concise as possible with your comments, so we can be expeditious as possible, make sure we get them home to do their homework. All right. So we will now move on to 1.4, inspirational message by Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina.
So, thank you so much. So first of all, I want to say, welcome back to school. Proud to see many of our school board members, our superintendent, our cabinet as well, joining our families, staff, and scholars on their first day of school, so thank you all for doing that. I also want to say that many of our working families, our parents, students maneuvering their new schedule and making some adjustments there, many students preparing their backpacks with school supplies, the first day of, the first day school outfits, meeting their new teacher and teachers and classmates, many teachers prepared their classrooms and lessons for a successful school year, and this all brought memories from when my children were in school, and I remember making the first week an exciting event by preparing their backpacks together, arranging their outfits, of course, and then fixing their hair, leaving for school early, for a healthy breakfast at school site, meeting their teachers, and signing up for school site council. So I know that there's so many great things happening this first week, this last week of school, the last first week of school, and then, of course, moving forward into a successful school year. So I want to thank everyone who has participated and joined in these eventful events, so look forward to another great, successful 2023, 2024 school year. So I just wanted to say thank you, everyone, for joining us.
All righty, thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina, and definitely welcome back to everyone. Okay, we'll move on to 2.0, public comments, and 2.1, receive public comments. This is the only time the public will have an opportunity to address the board on items not on the agenda and within their subject matter jurisdiction, such as district policies, procedures, programs, services, or fiscal matters. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on one topic will provide no more than 30 minutes total. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory statements or comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. And we will go ahead and start with our first public comment, and I apologize if I mispronounce your names. It's Gia, okay, we have Ms. Gia Reese, welcome. And I'm going to ask if these folks, if you're all from Savant Prep, that you organize your comments together so that we have the clock on for 30 minutes, okay? Because I believe, I imagine, we have more than five or six folks.
At this point, President Wyatt, what we normally do is give each speaker five minutes, because regardless, no one person can speak more than five minutes.
Right.
And, but then the cumulative time would be...
Will be 30 minutes.
And I'll keep track of the time.
All right, thank you, sir. All righty, come on up, welcome.
Your first speaker is going to be who?
We have a presentation that we put together, the three of us, for 15 combined.
15 minutes, okay.
Okay. To President Wyatt, to Vice President Tillman, and the board, Superintendent Ariano, and the cabinet, community members and friends, good evening. Amen. My name is Eva Tillman. I am a principal and first and second grade combo teacher.
My name is Jeanette Valkazar, Director of Curriculum and Instruction and kindergarten teacher.
And I am Gia Reese, Director of Operations.
And we are the founders of Savant Prep Academy of Business. We just want to start by thanking you for the opportunity to stand before you today. We are here to submit a request so that we can utilize the rest of our campus. There are four vacant classrooms that are on our site. There are, the classrooms are pictured at the top of the handout that we provided you, and they're circled in red. Just to give you a little background, when we first were provided this space through Prop 39, there was already a county school program that took up four of the classrooms. By December of 2022, that county school actually left, and so in January of 2023, I put in a request for us to go ahead and utilize that space. So after a little bit of back and forth, just with the district, we did get just a glimmer of hope that we would be able to use those rooms in early July, but then I received news from superintendent just over this past weekend that we actually would not be able to use that space. And that's a pill that we can swallow. I think for us, the insult to injury was more so that we were told that the classes would be used for storage instead, and we have received word that we are going to be co-located with a high school also, and so that does just provide cause for, we just have some questions about that. After being, I'm sorry, so to say that the best use for me of a classroom is storage and not necessarily the education of students, I do find that troublesome, and it does sadden me, especially since the majority of our students at Savant Prep are African-American. In traditional school settings, African-American students just do not typically succeed. We do have data for you that we'll go over down at the bottom of your packet, but for us, we have been able to offer a program that provides students with a high-quality education, and we're seeing the academic achievement on an everyday basis, and more importantly, in our test scores at the end of every school year. If you work in education, you know that we sit in many trainings about equity, right? About critical race theory sometimes, we're always talking about our own implicit biases. And for me, sometimes I do sit in those meetings, and I feel like, I mean, this is great talk, but a lot of times in the real world, it doesn't materialize. And so right now, we are talking about a situation that has come across your desk in real life, where African-American students could be positively impacted by use of this space. We have about 50 students on our waitlist right now who would like to start to come to our school, but we have to tell those parents no, because we don't have the space to have class for them. So I believe that a lot of times when we have to make these real-life decisions, our biases come in, and we say things like, you know, an anime object or storage is more important than student achievement and what we can do for African-American students. But I do, I have faith actually in the board today that you will act according to a lot of the workshops and the teachings that we receive, that you will make a decision tonight that is in favor of equity, that will provide African-American students with a space to succeed and learn, and that decision would be if you decide to go ahead and grant us the use of the other four rooms, vacant rooms that are on that campus.
Okay, and as Ms. Tillman stated, initially, we were under the impression that we would have the additional classrooms, so with that in mind, we went ahead and just moved forward with our enrollment. So currently, we have 266 scholars that are enrolled, but upon receiving the news that we would have to, or we were awarded the classrooms, I had the responsibility of reaching out to those family members, letting them know that we don't have the space, and they would ultimately have the decision, or would be returning their student to the homeschool that is initially failed them at this point, and that is why Savant has been their result, or they were seeking Savant for their student. But having to tell a parent that they must return their child to a system that is failing them was extremely disheartening. In that moment, I actually felt like I had failed them. You know, when our parents enroll at Savant, we talk about our whys, and one of my whys is while I am the Director of Operations and a co-founder of Savant, I'm primarily a parent, and in just advocating for my child and his education, I had the opportunity to witness and actually experience the disparities in the public education system as it relates to children of color. And in knowing that, I just felt like, you know, schools have the responsibility to advocate, parents also must advocate, and then students must be empowered to advocate for themselves. Now, this is not a new issue. This is not a San Bernardino issue. We all bear the responsibility of changing a system that consistently reinforces practices of inequality. It seems small, but one way SBCUSD can be a part of the change is grant us full utilization of the campus. Our data reflects our academic excellence. African-American scholars at that. We just need the space to continue to do the work.
So we are the top performing charter school in San Bernardino. We would like, so in the handout that you received, we would like to go over some data with you all, just to show the excellence that has been happening since 2018, when we first opened. Our school is 89% predominantly African-American. We have been, you know, we have been referencing the fact that we are the top performing school, so we are going to just highlight the data that we have to show what it means to be a scholar at Savant Prep. Perhaps after, you know, reviewing the data, you will just decide that the best use of those four classrooms would be allowing us the space to educate as many scholars as possible. So in the handout that has been provided, blue represents students who have exceeded the standard, green will show you students who have met the standard, yellow will show you students who have nearly met the standard, and then those in red are students who did not meet the standard at all. When we take, when we look at fifth grade CASP data from the 2021, 2022 school year, specifically for African-American students, for the San Bernardino City Unified Schools District, they have 21.43% of students who met or exceeded the standard in English Language Arts, and 56% that did not meet it. That area is pictured in red. For mathematics, it is even more alarming. We only had 8% who met or exceeded the standard, which means 92% of those students did not meet those standards. At Savant Prep, we have 75% of our scholars, fifth grade scholars, who met or exceeded the standard in English Language Arts, 25% who did not. In the area of math, 83% of those scholars met it. If you look at the data, it also shows that 0% of our scholars did not, were not in the not meeting standards. Therefore, there was not one single fifth grader who did not meet the standard that school year. All of this is just to show you that, you know, a district school, an African-American, for an African-American student at a district school, it is far more likely that they will just not meet the standard in reading and in math, you know, but at Savant Prep, we kind of have disproven that, you know, and the likelihood of them just excelling is just much higher. So we just ask is storage, you know, more important than a student getting the education that they deserve at this point in time. And to finish up.
And then, you know, just to be fair, you know, this is not a new issue. This is an age-old issue. Again, like we said, this is not specific just to San Bernardino City Unified. This is something that on a national level, coast to coast, people are asking the question, how do we educate African-American scholars? Right here in San Bernardino, you all have a gem. You have a gem of willing parents, you have a gem of phenomenal scholars, you have teachers and educators who even amongst some of the challenges within COVID-19, a lot of things that we're dealing with and trying to provide also SCL services and make sure that the whole child gets an education, we have been able to do that, and I think that that should truly be celebrated. If we have the students who want to attend, we firmly believe that they should be provided the access to get what we have to provide for these scholars. And so if you are here in honor or supporting Savant Prep Academy, could you please stand? We just want you to see the lives and the families, the community that you will be affecting, you know, if in fact we are not provided these rooms. Each and every one of our parents is looking forward to utilizing that space to make sure that their scholars can continue, and parents on our waitlist, again, there are 50 already who really want the opportunity to be part of what we have been able to build. So thank you so much for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you. All right, our next public speaker in common, Exaya Smith. Ms. Smith, or Mr. Smith, excuse me. Ms. Smith, welcome, Exaya.
Hi, my name is Exaya Smith. I attend Savant Prep Academy of Business, and I'm going into the fifth grade. I'm here today because our school needs additional classrooms so that more kids like me have the chance to attend my school. I like Savant because they push us to do our best. The teachers are nice, and we're always doing something educational but fun, like our business project, which my company must splash and slush, a mobile slushy company. We also compete in spelling bees, have music, golf, dance, and so much more. So we need your help. Please, help our school get more classrooms so that more kids like me have the chance to enter to learn and depart to build. Thank you and have a wonderful night.
Thank you, Exaya. Those are all of the speakers under the Savant Prep category. Next will be speakers under the Evelyn Herrera, is that, did I pronounce that right? Herrera. All righty, so our first speaker is Irma Martinez, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Irma Martinez, and I'm here to support Evelyn Herrera. It wasn't the right way, how the security, throw her on the floor and attack her. So if there's any way they could change the staff's, how they work inside the school, they'll be up.
All righty, thank you. Okay, our next public speaker in common is Mr. Isaac Sanchez, welcome.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm here to support my cousin Evelyn. I just want to say, it wasn't the right way he handled the situation, and it's not, it's not my problem, but I had another situation with another kid at school. I didn't do anything. I was just standing still, waiting for the kid to do what he wanted to do. He texted me saying stuff, what he was going to do, but I wasn't going to do anything first. So it happened, and then it was just, it was me standing here, standing still, and him on the opposite side, facing each other. Security came, they, you know, they separated us. I wasn't doing anything, I was standing still, and then the kid tried coming at me, but they got him. I was just standing still on the phone with my mom, and then the same security that did to my cousin tried pushing me around, telling me to go to the office, but I didn't do anything, say anything, or I just stood still, and he just kept pushing me back and pushing me around, telling me to go to the office, even though I didn't do anything. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next public comment speaker is Mr. Gil Navarro, welcome.
Good evening, Board President, Board members, Superintendent Marcio, sorry, Ariano. My name is Gil Navarro, I'm an education advocate, and I think you've mentioned, you've heard Evelyn Herrera's name. I know we sent the videos to all of you, I don't know if you had time to look at it, where the, and I'm going to say his name, because it happened, and that's the way it is. CSO, Mr. Burks threw Evelyn down on the ground, and when I explained to Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, you know, maybe Evelyn did something wrong, but when you throw kids to the ground, you're looking at a potential lawsuit. And I sent you the second video, remember the headlines, African-American students riot, where they were peacefully protesting racism when they were attacked by the security guards, and Burks is right there in the forefront, throwing a kid down on the ground. If you look, the kid got up and holding his face, so that's how he operates. And then, and then secondly, thirdly, they sent him over to Curtis to fill in for a security guard that was absent, and somehow he located Evelyn's younger sister, and we put a complaint in writing, by the way, and identified her, and he said, I know your sister, and he scared her, she didn't feel safe on Curtis' property, but in talking to Guillermo, your principal, he told me that Burks was only there for a couple of days, he's not going to be there any longer. And so this is how this guy operates. Plus, there's a third video, now that one we just got in writing. There's a third video I sent to all of you, where he was confronting Sanchez, and the way Sanchez was able to get him to stop, he pulled out his phone and says, I'm videotaping you right now, so then Burke stopped. So this is a guy, I'm going to say in street language, this guy's a bad dude. He should not be an employee in this district. And because he upset Evelyn and kept telling her, you'll never amount to anything, she got angry, and we just got a current mental health diagnosis on Evelyn. I won't share with it publicly, but this diagnosis with young people, they have a lot of anger. And so this is a young lady that has 20 Fs at the end of the 10th grade. She did special ed, she has 20 Fs. Isn't that wonderful? Should we applaud that? So that's what she had to deal with. And so if they would have utilized child fine and found out what her problem is, they probably would have came up and identified the proper mental health diagnosis that I was able to direct the mother to get Victor counseling to evaluate her. I'm the one that has to do it. Why? Why does outside people have to do the work that your special ed people should be doing properly? This is why a lot of these kids are not successful. So you have to justify how the special ed teacher allowed her to have 20 Fs. And he did say, well, she wasn't going to class. Why? I asked him, did you ever ask her? And he said, no. Come on, give me a break. You know, we're not here talking out of line, so, you know, we need your help to clean this up. And unfortunately, Evelyn is up for expulsion at the end of this month, and what I'm, what I'm going to offer this board, if we rescind the recommendation for expulsion, I won't send all these videos to the Department of Justice and bring them back in, because this is a level of cruelty. Cruelty, that's the best adjective I can identify. So you make a decision. You want me to bring in the Department of Justice? Are we going to treat this young lady fairly and remove the recommendation for expulsion? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Navarro. And our next public comment speaker is Alvia Herrera, welcome.
Good afternoon, Evelyn's mom, can you get us an interpreter?
Oh, interpreter, please. All right, they're coming down. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Evelyn, I'm the, I'm sorry, I'm Evelyn Herrera's mother. I know it's bad, this is why I'm trying to help my daughter with her classes that she may need right now. This is why we put her in a program to evaluate her, it's due to her anger management. I just want to be able to help her. She was in a program at school, but I don't feel like she was helped the correct way, the way that she needed to be helped. the way that she needed to be helped. And this is why I'm here. I just want to see if you guys will hear me out and not suspend her and maybe give me, give me another option for, to help her out. To give her an opportunity for her to be able to do something. And thank you all very much.
Thank you, Ms. Herrera. Alright, our next public speaker in comment is Alfonso Arribas. Mr. Arribas?
Good afternoon. I'm Evelyn's uncle. And I've been training Brazilian Jiu-Jitsu for the last couple of years. And I'm well aware of the strength and weight difference that, you know, there's such a huge difference between a little girl and a gentleman that's well over 200 pounds. And I was just one, like, the situation wasn't handled in my eyes, in a good way. And I was wondering what the district is doing to incorporate or to train the people that are allowed to put hands on students to handle the kids in a safe way. Like, this was just a situation that happened to my niece. And it saddened me, it saddened my sister, my whole family a lot. But it doesn't have to get repeated. So I was just wondering what the, what the district is going to do or the things that are in place so that it doesn't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Arribas. I believe those are the comments, Mr. Navarro, for a particular topic and subject? Are those the only two left? Okay, I don't believe so. Okay. Did she and? Is it a, Ms. Hester, Alicia Hester?
No, my name is Maria. I'm.
Did you put in a blue sheet?
Yeah, it's right here.
Oh, yep. Can you bring it to Ms. Cunningham?
Good afternoon. I'm right here to support my niece. Evelyn Herrera, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous and I'm a little confused with all this situation. I just feel like it wasn't like right how the security guard handled her, you know? Like, there's like a different ways to handle. And plus, like, he worked at school. So like, I just feel like as a mother, I would not like my daughter be mistreated like how she was mistreated. So I just feel like you guys need to just concentrate how you guys put the security guards on school, because it's not cops. That's not right, because I see the video and I see how he handled her. She's a little girl. I can see her bra, almost her private parts. So when I see the video, I was like really, really mad, because I have kids. I don't have a daughter, thank God. Because if she was my daughter, I would be against everyone. I would take this to court. I would take this fodder. Because I mean, it's not right what he did to her. So I mean, maybe you guys can work more, like, the security people, like, to handle more the students right. That's all. Yeah.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on to our next public comment, and that will be Samantha Stacklehouse. Welcome.
Good evening, Superintendent Ariano, Board President, Dr. Wyatt, trustees. My name is Samantha Stacklehouse. I am the Inland Empire Local Advocate for the California Charter Schools Association, and I represent the vast majority of charter schools that this board authorizes. I'm here tonight to express CCSA's support for Savant Prep and their request for additional use of their Prop 39 School District location. You will hear from your charter liaison tonight about the performance of the San Bernardino City Authorized Charter Schools. I would just like to re-highlight that Savant Prep has the highest English and math test scores out of any of your authorized charter schools from the 21-22 school year. They also serve an 89% African-American student population in their TK6 program. I personally have visited this school and seen the amazing work that this leadership team is doing at Savant Prep. These students are incredibly engaged and fulfilled to be in an environment where they feel they are a priority. This is a school that offers the best kind of education to our students district-wide. I hope that you will consider their message of support tonight, and everyone in the crowd has made it very apparent. Thank you for your time and have a great evening.
Thank you, Ms. Stacklehouse. Alright, our next public comment is Alicia Hester. Welcome.
Thanks, everybody, for being here tonight. I'm a parent of two Savant Prepians, and I have to say, my kids wouldn't be the same without Savant Prep. I was going over a lot of your things that have passed in recent years, and one of them was, you guys are in favor of charter schools. You're in favor of alternative learning. But without the space and without the proper handling of one campus, how can anybody really be expected to wash their kids' floors the way that mine have? I mean, these ladies, they could operate out of a tent. So the space isn't really what's an issue, but it is for the kids. And what are you telling them about, about their importance of their education? And of what their, what their impact on our community is if you just keep taking things in, fill it in with some chairs and tables? That's not the right way to treat anybody, and you were all students once. We need to really, really consider the impact this is going to have of the future of these kids from San Bernardino. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, that's it for our public comments in person. I believe we have one virtual comment. Is that correct, Ms. Cunningham?
Yes, we do. Monica Cardona.
Okay, welcome, Ms. Cardona.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Good evening.
Great. Thank you so much for giving us time this evening. I'm here in support of Savant Prepatory. My daughter was going to be one of the kindergarten students to be enrolled. We were given great news from Ms. Balkazar about that. After researching and looking for a kindergarten that was going to fit her needs and give us peace of mind academically, we received the news that unfortunately she is being waitlisted as a result of those rooms not being made available. And in turn, it actually hindered any process we were trying to conduct with an IEP in a 504, as our daughter is on the spectrum. That school has actually been one of the few that has been very proactive in trying to help with her transition and making sure she could get established with an IEP and meet any accommodations needed for her. We did try going to the district before. And I would say it goes beyond race. I know there was a lot of emphasis revoking our children of color. My daughter is mixed race. We are Hispanic and Asian. However, looking at the homeschool, the testing boards, they're calling, they really are, so some change needs to happen within the school district itself. But seeing Savant, we were shocked and had to do a double take to see how well their scores are and how successful the students have been. And that is a place we would love to have our daughter go. And to receive this news, it's truly heartbreaking, because we want to be able to support the city. We want to be able to support this district. But in having that decision reversed, it would leave us to have to put our daughter in a different district. You know, whether it's having another family member in a different city. But that's also a loss of student, a loss of state funding that could potentially go back within the city. And it allows Savant to continue to help leave our students successful, imparting from transitional kindergarten onward, and sets a wonderful foundation for them to emplace and anywhere else they may want to pursue as they get older. So I'm truly hoping that this can be reconsidered, because I mean, to put, use it as storage, makes it feel as if these children lack of value. And knowing that you're going to use something that could fill the seats of students to get a great education, and in turn, your youth opportunity, as they said, inanimate. I can't say that sits well with any parents that's been trying to get their children to the school. So I'm just asking if that could please be reconsidered by any means, whether it's one additional classroom, a second classroom, if it's fiscally there's an issue with it, whatever we could do as parents to try to help make this possible, be greatly appreciated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cardona. I believe that's it for public comments. So thank you, everyone, for your public comments. We will move on to 3.0, Public Hearing. 3.1, Initial Reopener Proposal for the California School Employee Association, CSEA, Chapter 183. So I'll go ahead and close our open session meeting. Alright, we'll go ahead and reopen. Ms. Cunningham, are there any public comments?
There are none.
Alrighty. I'm going to go ahead and read this here. Be resolved, the Board of Education receives initial reopener proposal from California School Employee Association, CSEA, Chapter 183. A moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion or comments? Alright, hearing and seeing none. We will go ahead and start with our student board members. So I will start with Mr. Nunez. Maybe an aye or nay? Yes or no?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Alright, well, the rest of the board, please cast your votes now. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing. We'll reopen to our general membership meeting. 4.0, closed session. 4.1, closed session, public comments. This is a time that members of the public can provide an opportunity to directly address the board about any item described under this closed session. Individual's comments on any subject matter within the board's jurisdiction may address those during the regularly scheduled public comments later in the agenda. Ms. Cunningham, do we have any public comments?
There are none.
Thank you very much. Then we will go ahead to 4.2 and adjourn to closed session. Thank you. So here we go. Alright, folks, we're coming on back in. Got a little comment there. 5.0, action reported from closed session. We'll move on to 5.1, Claim Number 541010. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves settlement agreement, Claim Number 541010, in the amount of $100,000.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chahusky. Any comments or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Move on to 5.2, Approval of Elementary School Vice Principal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the appointment of the following employee, Benita Ansadi, Elementary School Vice Principal, Wilson Elementary. Effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
A moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Alexander, second by Vice President Tillman. Any questions or comments? Alright, let's go ahead and vote. Is Ms. Ansadi here this evening? Hey, there you are. Congratulations and welcome. We'll move on to 5.3, Approval of High School Principal. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves appointment of the following employee, Manuel Gonzalez Jr., High School Principal, Royal Valley High School. Effective date, work year, and salary to be determined.
A moved. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, second by Ms. Sabios. Any discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Alright, motion carries. We'll move on to 5.4, and I think I'll need a little background on this. Is this the one that we aren't taking no action on? Or we are taking action on? Okay, this is when we are. Okay, 5.4. That's why I was asking, I want to make sure. And I do apologize, is Mr. Gonzalez here this evening? He is not. I didn't think he was, because I know who he is, but I just want to make sure before we move on. Congratulations, Ms. Gonzalez, if you were watching at home, great to have you over to Royal Valley. Alright, so 5.4 is a yes. Alright, 5.4. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves a job description for Assistant Director of Expanded Learning Sunrise slash Caps.
Moved.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Alexander. Any discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Moving on to 5.5, Approval of Job Description Assistant Director of Engagement. There will be no action on 5.5. We'll move on to 5.6, Expulsion of Students. Be resolved, the Board of Education accepts and adopts the recommendation, finds the hearing panel based on review of the panel's findings, facts, and recommendations, orders the expulsion of the following students with identification numbers as listed below in accordance with the board's rules and regulations and compliance with Education Code, Section 48900.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any comments or discussion? Okay, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Moving on to 5.7, Lift of Expulsion of Students. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes the readmission of the following students with identification numbers as indicated below to schools of the Samuel S. Unified School District in accordance with the board's rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, Section 48900.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any comments or discussion? Alright, hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Moving on to 5.8, Petition to Expunge, Rescind, or Modify Youth Court or Expulsion. Be resolved, the Board of Education authorizes expulsion and/or youth court modification, expungement, or rescinding of the following students with identification number as indicated below to schools of Samuel S. Unified School District in accordance with the board's rules and regulations and in compliance with Education Code, Section 48900.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any comments or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Motion carries. Moving on to 5.9, other closed session action. And I will turn this over to Superintendent Mr. Ariano.
Thank you, President Wyatt, and members of the Board of Education and audience. As you know, the last couple of weeks, we've been working hard to fill our position for communications, community relations director. We had many great candidates, very good interviews, and we believe we selected the perfect person for the job. And she is here in the audience today. The position was approved through the Personnel Commission. So I want to just formally introduce Ms. Mary Rhone Shell to the district and to the community. And she's here today and just want to say welcome to Mary Rhone. She is coming to us from Samuel County Schools within their communications department. So we're very pleased to have her on board. So Mary Rhone, looking forward to working with you and being part of the team. So thanks for being here today and love seeing your family with you here today as well. Thank you.
All righty, thank you Superintendent Ariano. Congratulations, Mary Rhone. Great to see you from one organization to another. All right, moving on to 6.0, reports, comments by union organizations, 6.1, Samuel County Teachers Association. Good evening.
Good evening, President Wyatt, Superintendent Ariano, Vice President Tillman, members of the board and cabinet. I'm Ashley Vita Salcala, President of the San Bernardino Teachers Association, speaking on behalf of our 3,000 members. I know our members last week were excited to welcome back their students to a brand new school year. There's nothing like the start of a new year to really set things off in the right direction. And SBTA looks forward to continuing to work together with the district as we have over the years to find solutions to meet any challenges that come our way in order to ensure that our employees have everything they need to ensure our students' success. So I want to take a moment to wish everyone, our certified and classified staff, our students, our parents, and our community, a wonderful 2023, 2024 school year. Thank you for your time this evening.
All right, thank you, Ms. Alcala. Good to see you. Moving on to 6.2, California School Employee Association.
No report.
No report, thank you very much. 6.3, Communication Workers of America.
No report.
All right, thank you very much. 6.4, Samuel County School Police Officers Association.
No report.
All right, thank you. 7.0, administrative reports, presentations. 7.1, annual report on charter schools.
Board, you have in front of you the annual reports for each one of our 12 charter schools. Those reports include the school focus, the financial snapshot, enrollment, demographics, an annual audit report, special ed encroachment information, and of course the scores according to the California Accountability System, which are our CAS scores. So you have those attached herein. And as you can see, our charter schools are doing well, so as presented.
Ms. Thank you, Ms. Applegate. And we do have a public comment on 7.1, so I'll go ahead and invite Ms. Tillman back up to the podium.
Good evening again to the board, superintendent, cabinet. I just wanted to take a little bit more time if necessary to just go over some of our data reports. There has been also a discrepancy in what you see in front of you for our charter school reportings. I would first just like to highlight that in special education, we did hear the meeting, I think this was last year about this time, when we had the same report come up. And one of the concerns is that we didn't have any special education students. Again, to provide a little bit of background, we started K-2, and with, at that time, we were using the district's SLPA. It was always recommended to give students the gift of time between kindergarten to second grade before just automatically placing them into special education services. So we started K-2. By the time we grew to third grade, we went away for COVID. And so the students were doing distance learning, and we were still trying our best to get students identified even virtually, but we all know that was very tough. So as soon as we came back to school, this would have been the 2020, oh, it was this school year, the 2021, 2022 school year. We got right to work in identifying students for special education if they needed it, especially provided some of the learning gaps and new scholars that came into our campus. So as you see there, for the 2021, 2022 school year, we did have a total of five special education students at that time. Right now, in the 2022, 2023 school year, we do have 21 scholars. Some of these do include students who take speech services. I do want to just take a little bit of time to talk about the fact that, again, African-American students are disproportionately represented in special education classes. And so one of our goals is to make sure that we go through a very thorough MTSS, so multi-tiered student support system, just to make sure that our students get all of the interventions prior to placement. So it does take time to make sure that we are offering everything we can. Our teachers have to prove they're doing everything they can for that scholar before we decide to recommend testing. And so that does explain that we do have special education students, and these are our numbers. I did just want to go back and provide clarity that fourth grade data, we do have the comparison for SBCUSD, and we did this based off of African-American students. But we'll just go ahead and look at Savant Prep. In the fourth grade, we did have a total of 78.57 students meet or exceed the standard in English Language Arts for fourth grade. And then for math, we had a total of 57.14 students meet the standard for math. And when we get to the third grade totals, we had 51.85% of students meet grade level standards for English Language Arts. And then in math, it was a total of 77.78%. Just to a little bit give you background, this was also the time where we were, we didn't have location then. So we were figuring out Del Vallejo and, you know, the, some of the challenges that came with that placement as well. But we were still able to bring a certain level of excellence to our program. And so again, we were, thank you for your consideration, also for what you were able to do and just that placement with Prop 39. So really, again, we wanted to present that we are offering a very robust program, that we are providing students with a high-quality education, and provided the use of the additional space, we would hope, you know, nothing more than to continue to partner with SBCUSD in providing this program for our scholars. I'm not sure if you have any questions for me at this time, but I just wanted to make sure we give a thorough account of our numbers.
Okay, Ms. Rosales Medina.
I forgot to ask you during the, the public comments area where, where you mentioned there was 50 students that were enrolled on the waiting list currently. And out of those 50 students, how many would be from the Samuel County Unified School District?
Yes, we checked, there are 32. So 32 of those scholars are from SBCUSD.
Okay. And then I noticed that in the report, it also indicates how many students, this was for 2021, 2022. I don't know if it says in the 2022, 23. How many students you had there? It might be really small for me to see.
No, this is just a report of 21, 22.
Okay. Okay. Well, thank you for that.
Of course. And if you'd like 22, 23, we can get that to you.
All right, no other questions. Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Tillman.
Thank you.
All right, Ms. Applegate, I believe that was everything that you wanted to present on that one?
Yes, and so you will take a vote to approve.
All righty, I'll entertain a motion.
Moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Rosales Medina, second by Ms. Chahusky. Any other further discussion or comments? All right, I'll go ahead and move over to our student board members. Mr. Nunez?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott?
Oh, I'm so sorry. Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, board, may you please cast your votes as well.
And, Ms. Cunningham, would you register me as accusing myself? Thank you.
Mr. Tillman, I put you as not present right now, but I'll change it.
Okay, motion carries. Excuse me, sorry. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.0, action items. 8.1, student board members, preferential voting for action items. And that'll be a little bit of information that I'll go ahead and read. Talked a little bit about it earlier. All righty. Now that we're moving on with the majority of our voting for this evening, I want to briefly explain to our board and the public watching how the voting will be done. With addition of preferential voting, it will take some time for everyone to get comfortable with the process, so please bear with us. For approving action items, I will read each item, ask for motion, and second for the regular, non-student board members. After motion has been made, I will then take a verbal vote for each student board member for that item. They will say yes or no, or abstain. Their votes will go into the meeting minutes. After their votes, I will then ask the rest of the board members to vote for the same action item electronically. I will do this on all action items listed. Okay, and when we move to the consent list, I will further explain the process. I think we've been modeling it pretty good so far, so great job to our students. Okay, we'll move on to 8.3, adoption and modification of master plan for multilingual programs.
8.2.
Oh, sorry, 8.2, my apologies. 8.2, personnel report number two. Let me just real quick. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves personnel report number two dated August 8, 2023, as presented and amended.
As presented.
Moved.
Okay.
It was moved by Ms. Chahusky, second by Vice President Tillman. Any comments or discussion? All right, hearing seeing none, let's vote.
Students are going to vote first.
My apologies. All right, Mr. Nunez?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
All right, rest of the board, we can vote now electronically. Okay, motion carries. Moving on to 8.3. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves the adoption and revise updated 2023, 24 master plan for multilingual programs.
Board, you have in front of you the updated English learner master plan to, to reflect the new name of the multilingual programs master plan. And that includes an alignment with the California Department of Education Federal Program Monitoring Instrument. It aligns with that perfectly. And then it also includes the California EL roadmap. Those are the two largest updates to that plan.
Ms. Applegate? I don't see any questions or comments for you. In that case, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion? No, not at this. No, there is not.
It says approve as presented.
Moved.
Second.
Says be resolved.
Okay, okay, it's in motion by Vice President Tillman, seconded by Ms. Chahusky. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing and seeing none, we'll go ahead and go over to our students. Mr. Nunez?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
All right, there you go. We're going to get you used to that. Okay, thank you very much, board. We may now vote electronically. Thank you. All right, motion carries. Moving on to 8.4, approval of revisions to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan. Let me get there. Pursuant to provisions of Education Code 46120 slash B and 2, the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan needs to be approved whenever revisions are made by LEA's governing board in a public meeting and posted on LEA's website. But this program plan template guides consider living document that is periodically reviewed and adjusted with collective needs of the community, updates in law, and to provide continuous improvement and development in effective ELOP. Be resolved, the Board of Education approves our visions to the Expanded Learning Opportunities Program Plan.
Moved. Second.
It was moved by Ms. Abigail Rosales Medina, second by Ms. Alexander. Any other comments or discussion? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote. Sorry, is that one on it? I'll go over to our students. Mr. Nunez?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the rest of the board. We'll vote electronically. Motion carries. Moving on to 8.5, resolution of district emergency Arrowview Middle School chiller failure. Let me look at this one here. This is...
Moved.
Okay. It's been moved by Ms. Rosales Medina, and second by Vice President Tillman. Any comments or discussion? All right, let's go ahead, go over to the students. Mr. Nunez?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
Thank you all. We'll move on to our board members. Let's go ahead and vote. All right, motion carries. We'll move on to 9.0, consent list. 9.1, approval of consent items.
Moved.
Second.
It was moved by Vice President Tillman, second by Ms. Chahusky. Any discussion, comments, or items to be pulled? Hearing and seeing none, let's go ahead and vote on the consent agenda. Let me move our students. All righty, Mr. Nunez?
Aye.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Ms. Vasquez?
Aye.
All right, thank you very much. I do see a light though, so I apologize. It looks like we do have discussion.
So I need to pull, but are we there yet?
Yes.
Yes. It was 9.3 because I wasn't there at that special board meeting. 9.3, am I in the wrong section?
Oh, for the Brown Act workshop?
Yeah, I wasn't there, so I don't know if I should be able to vote on that one.
That's just the minutes.
Yeah, that's fine. It's just a review of the minutes.
Okay, that's fine.
But that's a good question. Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. So question clarified. So we're at that point. We'll go ahead and vote then, unless there's any other questions or comments. Hearing and seeing none, let's vote.
I'm sorry, who motioned and seconded?
Moved. I moved.
Ms. Chahusky? It's not going through, but everybody approved it passed.
We need no verbal from Ms. Chahusky or no?
No, she didn't. It's just not coming up on my screen.
Okay, very good. Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much. 10.0, reports and comments. 10.1, student board members. And let's see what our order is here. It's going to be the same order that we have been going through. Student board members, this is your time to provide comments. Student board members, this is your time to provide comments. You will have five minutes to do so, and we'll start with Mr. Nunez.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Antonio, and I'm excited to be a part of the student board this school year, and also excited for the new principal, Mr. Manuel Gonzalez Royo. I heard good things from my colleague at Cajon, and I think it'll give us a fresh start.
Alrighty, thank you, Mr. Nunez. Moving on to Ms. Scott.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Scott, and I attend Cajon High School. I am the third daughter of Vivian Wells and Willie Scott, and I will be a second-generation college student. I plan to attend UC Irvine or UC Riverside, and then major in Public Administration and Social Services. So, I have the honor and ability to attend the Student Board Members Retreat. I can say we learned a lot about our duties, and our resources, and responsibilities. I can also say I enjoyed my time there as I got to learn more about my fellow student board members, and our other board members as well. And I also attended the Brown Act Workshop where Mr. Mark Thompson and Mr. Paul McLachlan taught us all we needed to know. And I'm very grateful that I attended those meetings, and I hope this meeting goes just as good. Thank you.
Alright, Ms. Scott, it definitely will with that type of pacing. Great job. Hope I met my colleagues here taking notes from all of you so far. Alright, Ms. Vasquez.
Good evening, board members and citizens. My name is Silvana Vasquez, a senior at San Gregorio High School. It is an honor to represent all high school students in a historical step for our district. I would like to give congratulations to all students of the district for starting the new school year. I would like to acknowledge our new time passed by the California legislation. I believe that the times have affected not only families but students as well. In elementary and high schools, the times are harder for parents to commute from one school to another. As much as I appreciate the effort that our state is helping us, I believe the voice of the students is important, and I would like to ask students how they feel about the new times to hopefully move on to agendize as a district with your approval to help create a stronger and comfortable district for all. My goal is to help districts around California to be able to hear about the times, whether they agree with the times or not. As the students of California, I believe we should be heard about our opinions. I would like to agendize the late start times at the next meeting to help show that we are for the people, by the people, and with the people. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you very much. Well, well done. And you were asking for consent on an item? Consent, excuse me, to agendize an item?
Yes, I was asking to agendize the item.
Alright, and I will start to my left, Ms. Chahusky.
What was the item?
Yes, go ahead and repeat again.
I would like to agendize the topic of the late start times, please.
And the reason?
I believe that it has affected families and students as well, depending whether it's athletics, or just being able to commute to different schools. This time has really affected us all. It's not only affected families, but athletics as well. Some of us have to wake up early because we can't do sports after school due to the times that we have. And aside from that, if we were to do after-school athletics, we'd get home by probably six or seven, meaning that we only have five hours to do homework, and start the whole routine again, which is harder for us to do our homework, do our athletics, do what we want to do because of the late start times that we have.
So basically, you're asking to agendize a discussion on the late start policy bill. Correct? Okay. And so I will ask consensus first from the student board members. So I'll start from left to right this time. Ms. Vasquez.
Aye.
Alright, Ms. Scott.
Aye.
Mr. Nunez.
Actually, we're not voting because it's not agendized. So you're just gonna say yes or no, that you're giving consensus?
Aye is like a yes, but that's okay. Alright, Mr. Nunez.
Oh, yes.
Thank you, Ms. Chahusky. Ms. Rosales. Vice President Tillman. I am aye as well. Ms. Gandhi. Ms. Rosales Medina.
But I would like to maybe have that where it's more informative. Right. Because it's already passed. Anyway.
Alright, Ms. Alexander.
Yes.
Alright, Ms. Rosales Medina.
Because it is something that is through the state, and it's mandated. So I think that's something that we can at least provide updates because I'm sure there's families out there that are also still semi... Not fully understanding why these changes were needed, or we have to kind of abide by. So, but that would be good to have a quick update, especially for this new school year.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Chahusky.
I agree to having it consented. I believe she also talked about a survey to try to get information on how it's impacting. I think you said that. I think I heard that in hers as well. So that is part of the agenda item.
Thank you, Ms. Chahusky. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Vasquez.
Just to go off with what Ms. Mickey, Ms. Chahusky said. I am starting, I do want to create a survey for my school, just to start it off. I want to be able to ask for their input and see if they don't agree with the times. And if they don't, then I'd love to move on from there, just to make it clear for you guys.
Thank you, ma'am. Alrighty, any other comments or discussions on that item?
Uh, right here.
Alright, let's get you used to turn on your light. Does your light work over there? They don't have a light? Darn, alright. You don't have a light. Just raise your hand. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Scott.
I don't really have the same problem with the times, but I will back up Silvana on this. I don't have a problem with the time changing back to the way it was, but I do see how it can affect my peers, and some of our teachers, and some of you guys maybe. Maybe it's hard for you being a parent, taking your kids to elementary, and that starts at eight, and then high school starts at eight, and you're like, okay, this is a little stressful. And I know it goes much more deeper than that, but I do think that this is a good move and a good decision to make. And what she was saying about the survey, I do think the survey is a good idea. And if she can get that passed and create it, I'll definitely be passing it around my school and introducing it to him. And he'll probably pass it around, and I'll talk to the other board members about passing it around. I'm sure they're gonna support her in this like I do.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Alright, any other comments, discussion? Ms. Rosales. Boy, you got that one in just last minute. That was good.
Alright, just, I guess, just for the sake of clarification, so that there is no confusion coming, you know, when this item does become agendized. I'm getting the sense that maybe our student board members are under the impression that we can go back to changing the time? I'm not su... Oh, okay.
I just clarified. I think it's important that we... We got consensus that we're gonna agendize the item. We can't discuss the item.
Can't have a discussion.
That's the reason why we're agendizing it. At that time, we can have the discussion.
So I just wanted to clarify so that there... Because that's the message that I was getting, and I didn't want there to be like a letdown. But, perfect. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to 10.2, board members' comments, and we'll start to my right with Ms. Alexander.
Thank you very much. So, good evening to the community. Good evening to all the board members, starting with President Wyatt and the cabinet. I'm excited to share that I'm sad I missed the last school board meeting, but I'm excited because I was on the Footsteps to Freedom Tour, which was absolutely amazing. I was on the tour with a significant amount of our faculty, so staff members, administrators. And I'm proud to say, the tour that I was on, San Bernardino City Unified School District had the most attendees. And out of all the tours that have taken place throughout the whole summer, we've probably had over thirty students, thirty attendees. So what I'm asking is that we come back, we agendize, it's coming back and presenting. So I've already been working with Dr. Greer, as well as Irene, can't remember her last name, Awad, who is for Secondary Education and Ethnic Studies, that will come back and we present what the tour was all about. The Footsteps to Freedom was about the Underground Railroad network. And we spent eight days learning about the network and how it all started in terms of slavery, which the enslaved, all the way to the footsteps to freedom. So we started in Columbus, Ohio, Cincinnati. We went to Detroit, Canada, Rochester, New York, and Buffalo, New York. And we had an opportunity to meet some families that have been around, that have been able to preserve their land in Canada where their ancestors were free. And we actually met three ancestor, or three, excuse me, ancestors, yeah, basically, three generations in Canada at one of the museums. And so what was amazing about that is that they could tell their family history. And the significance behind the whole tour is understanding the right side of history. I don't know if many of you are aware of the fact that many school districts now are starting to eliminate even sharing what slavery was about, and you should not, because that's part of our history. But the investment that the school district put in into our faculty, our staff, our administrators were going was amazing because it's professional development, but it's understanding the history, but coming back, being able to educate our students and have them understand, but also the empathy that many of the attendees have been able to come about by learning about what they maybe didn't learn, or didn't hear about, or it was pretty much overlooked and not providing the details. So I share that. One, I was excited. Two, I look forward to us coming back if the board approves for us to come back and present. But most importantly, the investment that our school district is putting into for our staff members, because it's critically important. Secondly, I also attended the first day of school. So welcome back to all the students. Mickey and I were lock and step with each other. Went to several schools together, but I know a lot of other school board members did as well. And that was really exciting, just being able to greet the students and wish them a good day. And be able to see Superintendent Ariano on TV, speaking, and all the phone calls I received from all over, pretty much all over the nation. Some people did see it, so outside of California, so that's excellent. And then in terms of the welcome to the student board members, really excited that you're here. I've had an opportunity to see you in action and meet all of your colleagues. So excited to work with you. And a couple other items, because I know my time is running out. I wanted to make sure, in terms of the concerns that were expressed today regarding Savant, that we revisit what has been expressed. I think because of that confusion that maybe existed, that was shared, we do owe them the right. Just let's go back and just have the conversation about what we can do. Look at some options. As fifty students, I hate to hear the disappointment that was expressed. And most importantly, the families that are now have been displaced, and they have to go and find other alternatives. So if we could, that would be something to do. I also received a request for sponsorship for Arrowhead United Way, for a sponsorship. I know we haven't formalized that process, but it's something that we need to consider. I have the sponsorship letter here, and something I wanted to see if we would consider. It ranges from 5,000 to 20,000. So, and the proceeds are going in a positive direction, helping students at Valley College that don't have the means to buy food. And so it's helping their food bank, so. Alright? And then lastly, I wanted to ask, on August 26th, our board meeting training, if we could change that date because I won't be able to attend. And I believe that I might be with other board members that can't attend that meeting. So I just wanted to put that out there. And I think that's it.
Thank you, Ms. Alexander. Ms. Rosales Medina.
Yeah, for the August 26th, we definitely maybe have to look at that if there's other board members that will not be able to attend. Because that's a special board meeting that looks at topics that would be beneficial for... Especially for our new school board members. So if we can have later on either through email to try to look at an alternative date, if possible. I also wanted to mention with Underground Railroad, just to piggyback. I mean, it's a great experience. I know I was on it. So for the board members who have not been on that, should definitely consider for next year. It is an amazing... I know it's now increased from eight days. So hopefully, there's ways we can try to accommodate for those members that are able to attend for the next school year. And to also piggyback, there is, or was, there was an Underground Railroad to Mexico as well. So, you know, there was one to Canada. Well, there were several to Canada, but there was also to Mexico. So just to recognize that as well. I also want to say thank you to the board members that are here. It's really nice to see our school board members in attendance. And also having the opportunity to vote. Before, we never had that. Our students were able to, our student board members were able to vote. So I think this is great because we're able to see how you feel on certain subjects. And I know you'll get better as, just with how this works. And so I'm really happy to see all three of you here. And I also want to acknowledge Ms. Chahusky with regards to helping our students because you are the closest one there to with them, and guiding them through the process as well. So, I was able to attend an ALEO conference, and ALEO conference actually talked about childhood adverse trauma. And I think it was a great way to really look at how many of our students struggle with the academics portion when they have so many things going on at home and environments that are not necessarily in school. So I just want to make sure that... And I know I spoke briefly with Mr. Ariano, Superintendent Ariano, with regards to the programs that we are, they are looking at also incorporating here with regards to childhood adverse. And I don't have it in front of me with regards to trauma, so, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Mariano.
I can hardly wait for you to call on me. I'm so excited. I'm excited, first of all, about this first year as a school board member, coming from a classroom with a myopic view of our district as a teacher, and that one way of looking at things, to go from getting like blasted and drowned and seeing the whole thing. And I really have my cabinet members and board members to thank for all of that. Each and every one of you, just like a nugget of information, and you've taken me to heart, and I feel very, very comfortable. And I just, I filled with, you know, I get overwhelmed. So first of all, thank you. And then another thing, that we built this city tour. It's just given me so much to be able to share with community. Whenever I go to the Democratic Club or some other place where people say, "Oh, you know that district?" And I go, "Excuse me, sir." That's just simply not true. I feel very, very good about that. And Gwen Rogers, she still checks in on us. I don't know if she talks to you. I'm sure she does. She reaches out, and I still feel that she's a resource there for us, for me. And especially with, you know, I shared with her my big dream. And I want to share that with you right now. Anyway, last year was incredible that we built this, and I just... There's something that still makes me tug at my heart, makes me sad. And I'm gonna go back to this. I started off this year with it, and I'm gonna start this next year with it. I don't want to ever stop talking about... When we talk about all kids, we say all kids. You know where I'm going with this, right? We have those forgotten children. There's about thirty of them now. And they live in a place until they die. They are scholars, and when they're eighteen to twenty-two, they get, for their graduation, they get moved over into the community hospital side, now to live with adults until they die. In the meantime, from age birth to twenty-two, they are housed in the, I shouldn't say housed. They live in the subacute, is the children's hospital across the street. And we've looked at it every which way, and there's no way... There's actually only one way we could do it, and that is to build a whole new hospital for children. And that would require city, state, local, our district school, and of course, the community hospital is the Catholic charities. I'm not sure if they're there. So you have this private entity, you have county, and you have all of these people. But it all begins with a conversation. And Gwen Rogers told me, because it begins with a conversation. And frankly, they just need to build a whole new one. And where the existing one is, the hospital could easily use that partitionist parking because they don't have any parking over there. So that's my big dream, is to have a children's hospital that's on par with the one in Orange County. If you ever go online and look and see, that's what a children's hospital should look like, inside and out. And if you have yet to go and visit there, I don't know, I don't believe every... Have you been there? Okay, so, well, I'll go with you, and I'll show you. And not to say they're not well taken care of. I'm not gonna say that, because they're dedicated people. But the building, they have no school teachers there. They have one to two teachers plus staff. There is no spot for them. There's no desks. There's no storage. And nothing there is theirs. They can't lock anything because it doesn't belong to them. It belongs to the hospital. The children have no place to actually do work, or it's all done in a little tiny room, about, what, ten by ten, by eight? It's... It's, you know, paint, needs paint, it's very, it hurts, it hurts. It doesn't have any technology, it has one big giant smartboard. So, there I go. But I just want to share with you, that's what I would like to see happen, just let's build them a whole new school, hospital, community hospital. So, thank you, and thank you for listening. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. Vice President Tillman?
Thank you, President Wyatt. Want to welcome the new student board members. Good having you here and getting your input already. Thanks to the superintendent and staff and all the district employees for a great start to a new year. One of the, this year is one of the years with the fewest concerns and complaints that I receive from parents, so that's a, that's a big deal, because that means you guys are doing a whole lot of work to ensure that the parents and students are being taken care of. I do want us to, if we have to agendize it, agendize it, but I think the emphasis needs to be put on the fact that the board has always made it a mandate and a priority that siblings stay together. So, it doesn't matter what the circumstances are, if a student has been accepted to a school or one of our schools of choice, and they have a sibling, then we should work to ensure that the sibling goes to that same school. And somehow, that has to be integrated into the district's procedures, that should be normal. And it shouldn't be, the part of the process about waiting until September should not be part of that process. If I have a third grader attending School X, and I have a kindergartner start it, and the parent has assumed that the kindergarten is going to start at the same school, that's not the parent's fault, that makes sense. So, we should do the outreach. If you know that you have a sibling there, they could use the computer system to check the addresses. Or if a parent comes forward, there should be an expedited process, and you shouldn't tell them, "Wait till September," because that means you have parents driving to two different schools until September. There's got to be something better than that. So, if we need to agendize that, to talk about it, because the policy doesn't exist already, Mr. Ariano, or the procedures don't exist, and it takes board action, then I would hope that we would do that. It was good to see the new buses for students, was the first student. How many bus companies do we have right now?
Three.
So we have three? And to see them working and transporting the students is a good thing. So, and last, I want to make sure, I want to welcome Mr. Comnick, our new finance person. I would hope that we would agendize, Mr. Comnick, to give us an update on where he thinks we're at in terms of the spending of the estimate money, because a lot of that is deadline for 2024. As far as I'm concerned, you'll have a short window between now and maybe January, February to get the estimates and decide what you're going to spend the money on. But we should know now if there's any doubt at all that the money's not going to be spent, and to be fair to Mr. Comnick, he just got here, so we want to give you time to look at it, but be realistic. The one thing we do not want to happen is to have millions of dollars that go unspent. And I hope we're looking at big ticket items. I know that we had the concern about, and the total cost of using electric versus regular cars, that was never my concern in this instance. My only concern was ensuring that we expended the money. And I still go back to, and maybe we can agendize that, because I still think, and I think my fellow board members would agree with me, if the capacity is not there to spend the money on electric vehicles now, then we should spend the money on regular vehicles to replace old and dilapidated vehicles. And how do I know that? I just went by a district truck that had the windows rolled down, so it was in 110 degrees, so it was obvious there's no air conditioning. So, we, maybe we can agendize that, so we can have a discussion. I'm not talking about total cost of ownership, I don't care about that. It doesn't do any good to say you have total cost of ownership if you could get the vehicle. And then to find out we have millions of dollars that weren't spent, that's even worse. So, my only goal is to ensure that we spend all of this money before the end of the year. And the challenge is going to be getting someone to identify what you're going to spend the money on, getting the estimates, and getting the folks to follow through to ensure that we spend the money. And the reason why it's a huge concern for me, because I've worked in government, I did, I'm retired now thankfully, but I worked in government for 42 years, and as a government employee and someone that was in charge of the budget, it's hard to spend money. So I just want to make sure we're not sending any money back. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Viles?
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. So, yeah, I just want to say welcome to everybody, welcome back. I'm also really ecstatic to have you, board, student board members on board. I was here for the, one of the retreat dates, and it was really nice to share some time with you guys and get to know you a little bit more. I also, I just want to say, you know, good job to just the entire district on, you know, last week, I was able to attend one of the schools for, you know, a portion of the time in the morning as well, as they put some stuff together and welcomed students and families. And just, you know, watching the students come and be welcomed with, you know, such enthusiasm, and it's really heartwarming, and it's really nice to be a part of. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to be at all places, but I did get to see some of the postings that were made by our communications and, you know, social media department, that, you know, publicized a couple other school sites that also, you know, did similar welcomes of students. And so, I just want to say, you know, thank you to every, everybody, all the staff, and, you know, everybody that spends, you know, all this time and energy, and it really does make a difference. As an adult, just being there, I feel it, so I definitely know that our children, our scholars are also feeling the love and the warmth. So thank you for that. Also, I want to send a special shout out to the family engagement department, thank you, to the volunteers there, they actually gave me a little card, and I just want to say thank you. It was not expected, so it was really nice. It's always nice to receive a card, just FYI, anybody out there. Yes, and I also wanted to let you guys know that I've visited over the summer the Children's Center. I still have the IEC, IEC, ICEC to visit, yes. But I was able to visit the Children's Center, it's, you know, basically our infants and toddlers, and I think some, you know, four-year-olds, pre-school age. And it was just really nice, just maybe because I have a 16-year-old now, and it's been a while since I've had little kids around me. But it was so, so nice just to see, you know, the students be in that learning environment at such an early age, and even to be able to see the babies' babies, I'm talking about like months old, where, you know, you have the staff interacting with them, you know, talking to them consistently, reading to them, you know, playing instruments, you know, some of, unfortunately, sometimes as parents, you know, if in my case I was a single parent, I didn't always get, you know, the opportunity to be able to do that with my son, and so a lot of our students sometimes don't, you know, maybe receive as much of that in that early stage of development, so it's really important and really essential. You know, it builds the foundation in so many ways, and so I was really excited. Thank you so much, Dr. Rodriguez, and to the principal out there for, you know, just really opening the doors and kind of showing me around. I was very, I encourage you guys to kind of, you know, come out there and check it out. And also, Ms. Grande, Karen, if you can sign me up for a visitation to, what is it, what is it, the Subacute? Yeah, I would like to also, if I can get that set up as well, to kind of, you know, pay a visit. Other than that, I'm super excited to be, to be back. I took myself a couple weeks off in July, so I hope you guys all had a great summer and a restful summer, and I'm super excited for this upcoming school year, and I think we're going to, we're already doing so many wonderful things, but I'm really, really, really excited to just continue that in this upcoming year. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Viles. Ms. Shehusky?
Thank you. Good evening, and I'm going to go back to last school year briefly before we get to, I do my welcome, and in July, I was, I guess it was actually still part of the school, but in July, I was able to go to the Safe Schools Conference in Anaheim, which was really good. And I was able to attend for the first time the presentation by Chief Polino and Mr. Vatier on North Park and the lessons from North Park, and on what lessons for others. Their sessions, they did two sessions, they were full, and to say that our chief and Mr. Vatier are respected is an understatement within the safety community across this country. There were people from all over, and so I want to say kudos to them. I appreciate you sharing this story, and I appreciate that we are helping others, other school districts learn from our tragedy, and I think that is a wonderful way to honor Karen and our students. So yes, welcome back. I went to the Back to School Extravaganza, I can't believe how many people and how many booths and how many community partners were there. So many kudos to family engagement and everyone, the staff that put it on. I attended the management conference, which was also, Dr. Greenfield was amazing. I see you, I hear you, I value you, I love you. I'm just so excited for that tone to be set for our school and our scholars. I was also able to go to the, I was not unfortunately able to go to the secondary teachers' first day back, but I was with the elementary teachers for their welcome-back session. Also, well-attended, fabulous, kudos to elementary instruction, to Amy and crew for, and you, or Mrs. Applegate. I want to thank, our student board retreat was fabulous. It's the first time we've ever done anything like that. I can't say enough thank yous to Karen, to Nicole, and to Ken for their hard work and helping us put that day together for them. It was very engaging, we covered a lot of information, so if I'm over here trying to coach them, they're asking questions, it's trying to tie back to everything that they learned that day. We gave them a good experience and that, but, you know, this is a learn-by-doing, as all of us up here on the dais have figured out, we think we know until we sit in the seat. So, I think you guys have done a fabulous job. But the one thing I thought you guys would mention that you didn't was that Dr. Rodriguez got Tony Plana to come and meet with them for an hour and talk with them and encourage them, and Tony Plana from Ugly Betty and The Mayans and other TV shows. So that was really, really exciting, and I'm surprised you guys didn't mention that. Ms. Alexander talked about our welcome backs, kudos to Highland Pacific, Blenker, Schuman, Jones on their first-day activities, and really having a welcome, rolling out the red carpet to our students. I was, I drove past Pacific for the first time since the groundbreaking for the, and saw Gibbs Auditorium torn down, and my heart broke, because I spent lots of hours doing plays and singing in that, in that theater, and as a student, as a young person, and it was really hard to see, it was very emotional, but I'm looking forward to a world-class, I'm holding you to it, Mr. Pace, facility that the Gibbs family would be proud of. And then, lastly, I'd like to see us agendize a presentation on the Subacute Center from Special Education, on what's there, what our role is there, and maybe some suggestions from them on what we could do to enrich the program. I, there were some wonderful children there, but I don't think they're getting enough enrichment, and I think we could do more. And, you know, we've talked about this before, we've talked about this now several times, we've talked about this, you know, with some of our assistant superintendents, different, and I really would like to get consensus to agendize having a presentation on the Subacute Center, so that there's some understanding of what that, what we do for those students, what our role is for those students, and maybe how we could, what partners we might be able to work with to better serve those students academically, because not all of them, I felt were, when I went to visit, were being educated, they could have gotten more for their grade level, it wasn't necessarily age-appropriate information.
That was good, Ms. Shehusky, right to the second. Very good. Just kidding. But now, you still want your consensus on?
The Subacute.
Subacute, and then I think Ms. Grande talked a little bit about that, the Subacute Center, and you talked a lot about it, thank you, ma'am. Right, right, and thank you for, you know, the invitation to it as well. You know, I'll talk a little bit about it in my comments, but I will look for consensus, starting with you, Ms. Shehusky, obviously.
Yes.
Ms. Viles, Vice President Tillman, I am a yes as well. Ms. Grande? I'm sure it's a yes, Ms. Grande, right? Thank you. Ms. Rosales Medina? Ms. Alexander? Yes. Oh, gosh darn, our student board members, you know, you guys are going to teach me. I am definitely learning something new tonight and trying to get better at it. So, Mr. Nunez, Subacute Center, you'll have to learn a little bit more about that, but the, yeah, we'll teach you about that. Just looking for a yes or no? So we can talk more about it. Thank you, sir. Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Vasquez?
Yes.
All right, fantastic, so we do have consensus to agendize it. I'll start with that on a Subacute Center, you know, Ms. Grande did invite me to go see that facility, which, you know, we have a wonderful program there, but I found out that we do, and Mr. Pace, you could correct me if I'm wrong about this, but I believe we own the land behind that building, is that correct? Do we know? If we don't know, then we can find out, because it's an extensive piece of land, and, you know, we don't have to go far to rebuild if we want to, it's right there for us for the taking, if that is the case. But I would agree with Ms. Grande, we need to do more. I would like to see it as a world-class program, we use that word a lot around here, but if we're going to do it, do it right, you know, and I'll say that. Just want to give a shout, I've heard it as well from a few folks, but, you know, Ms. Martinez, Dr. Rodriguez, Ms. Shehusky, Karen, and Nicole, thank you again for putting it together and getting our student board members here. I know we've been talking about this for quite some time, after our board members were here before, so it's fantastic to see them back up here on a dais, because for our board members, student board members, you know, that's what we're all here for, is for you. You know, what happens at the beginning of the day, end of the day, it should all be about our students, right, and our community. So it's great to have you up here as representatives of our students and representing their voice, so please come prepared, right, with what the concerns are from our students. We really want to hear that more than anything. I'm going to concede the rest of my time, though, to Superintendent Ariano. I do have a light on, Mr. Ariano, because he said, he said, "Scott, I need some extra time," so I'm going to give him my extra time. Ms. Alexander?
Just a point of clarification on the two items that I requested to be agendized.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we have to vote on those in relation to Footsteps to Freedom? I had asked that we come back and present at our next board meeting.
Now, did you want to present or have the department present?
It's me along with the department.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was actually answering Karen on that. It's a presentation, so we don't need consensus on that.
We're good. And then the other one was the sponsorship for Arrowhead United Way.
I'll ask if that's something we want to agendize to discuss, or do we need to discuss? All right, and as, Mr. Ariano, we're doing a little sidebar here, we did get a legal opinion on that. I would agree we have to agendize it, because we'd have to discuss amount, and if we are going to do that. So I would start with you. Consensus?
Okay. I would like to move that we have on consensus on, agendized the sponsorship for Arrowhead United Way for the event in October, on October 14.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Grande? I will say yes. Vice President Tillman?
Are you specifying an amount?
Discussion to discuss amount and/or approval.
Okay, I agree.
All right. Ms. Viles? Ms. Shehusky? Mr. Nunez? Very good, sir. Ms. Scott? Ms. Vasquez? And then I do see Marion Grande's light on, Ms. Marion?
I'm so sorry, I did forgot, I did have a request, I forgot I was going to ask. Can I, is this too late? Can I, I mean, I'm still alive. I just wanted to ask people, any of the board members or anyone in the audience, if they would like to come on the 15th of this month to hear our board member Danny Tillman speak to the Rotary Club at 12 o'clock noon time, and if you do come, you can have a delicious And if you do come, you can have a delicious dinner. Just let me know and you can come, please, you're all invited. That's a rarity and I'm really looking forward to it.
Add that time to your next comments, but thank you, Ms. Grande. Of course, we'd love to see Mr. Tillman. Who doesn't want to see Mr. Tillman? All right, thank you for my comments, Superintendent Ariano.
Thank you very much. Well, let me first start by welcoming our student board members. Thank you for being here today. We really enjoy you being here and thank you for wanting to be a part of it. And Crystal, I know your mom is here, so I want to recognize your mom. Yeah, thanks for being here today and thank you for the late nights with your child. They're, they're doing a great job. And Mickey and Ken, thank you for all of your support and putting this all together. And of course, you mentioned the ladies from my office who've been very helpful. So thank you guys for putting us together. Wanted to say hi to Mia Cooper in the back hiding. Mia, good to see you. Back to school, right? Back to school. Good to see you. I want to formally welcome Terry Komnik. I wasn't here at the last board meeting, but I want to formally congratulate you and welcome you to the team, Terry. You're a great addition to our team, so thank you for being here. And now that we have Mary Rhone come onboard, I think we have our full cabinet and we are ready to rock and roll. So Terry, welcome. And just special shout out to Mohammed Islam, I'm sure he's watching, just wanted to thank him for holding down the fort all these months. So Mohammed, if you're out there, thank you, man. We're all very grateful for the support that you've given us. I also want to recognize Anna Applegate. We were at the CALSA conference over the summer and she was recognized, honored, honoring our own as part of CALSA. So we want to make the habit of double celebrating our employees when they are recognized out in the community. So we've put together this nice plaque for Anna, just to let you know that we are thankful and grateful and we appreciate everything you've done. And I'm going to pass this down, Anna, to you. That deserves a big round of applause. So I too want to thank everybody on a great start to the school year. I want to thank all of our certificated teachers, all of our classified support team, our management team, our cabinet. Everybody worked very hard and planned well and just the positive energy that was happening during the summer to get the school year started. Special thanks to the members of the Board of Education. Thank you for being present when you could at different events. I think it was important for the community to see us together, united, the kids to see us together, but more importantly, just the energy that it's creating. So thank you all for your support and all your time. We feel you and we thank you for all of that support. And prior to the first day of school, we had the opportunity to be involved in some learning. I know it was mentioned before, but our focus was really understanding inclusive excellence, equity, culturally responsive teaching. What does that look like? What does it seem like? So we had great presenters, Zerita Hammond, Dr. Victor Rios, and Dr. Derek Greenfield. And from that, many times we get reactions from people who participated in the training. And one item that we repeated often from Dr. Greenfield's training is the idea of Salabana, the African dialect greeting of, "I see you, I hear you, I value you," and we added, "I love you." And that became our mantra during that summer. Well, one of our outstanding teachers, Evelyn Vasquez from Serrano Middle School, who's actually here tonight, and I'll introduce her here in a minute. You can raise your hand. I told you it was going to be late, right? Did you bring a book? But Evelyn reached out to me the day after and that resonated with her and she said, "Mr. Ariano, thank you for that opportunity and I've created a poster." She developed this poster to go with the, "We see you, we hear you, we value you, we love you." And I told her, "Can I have your permission to replicate this across the district?" And she gave me her permission. So first of all, Evelyn, I'd like to have you stand up and just be recognized. Thank you. And Evelyn, what we've done now is this will be a poster that we're going to mass produce across the district. And because of your brilliance and because you're creating this energy, we made this poster framed and made one for each member of the Board of Education, so we are presenting these to you tonight. So these are for you to take home. But I also want to give one to the creator of it. So Evelyn, I've made one for you that I wanted to present to you tonight, so I'll come down. So that poster will be sent out to schools and proudly hung all across the district because we want to make sure as part of our inclusive excellence is that we do see each one of our students and that we do hear each one of our students and that we do value the brilliance of each one of our students and that we truly love each one of our students. So thank you for that, Evelyn. And I know our principal's here, Erin, thank you for being here today. That's how we inspire each other, right? So thank you for moving forward. So we're going to continue on that theme throughout the school year, making sure that everyone is seen, our parents, our students, our employees, and make sure that they are valued. So as you recall, the last time we were together, we, I had talked a little bit about my re-entry plan into the district. And so I've had the opportunity now to visit several schools, so I'm on that tour. I visited Cole, Highland Pacific, Golden Valley, Serrano, Bonneville, Belvedere, Cypress, and Thompson. And I tell you, the campuses look great. I want to do a shout out to Maria Gomez, who is the day custodian at Thompson. Man, when I walked through Thompson today, that place was immaculate. Like I couldn't even find the spider's web across the district because, you know, I'm looking, I'm picky, you know, I'm picky. I have obsessive compulsive behaviors about cleanliness, but I just want to give a shout out to everybody, but in particular Maria. She just takes great pride in her work, so I promised I'd give her a shout out today because just outstanding work. As part of that re-entry plan, we have started now to set up forums. So there will be information going out tomorrow that our staff will put out where I will have community forums, the opportunity to interact with staff and our community. So there will be four dates that we have listed, August 28th, August 29th, September 6th, and September 12th. And if we need more, we'll schedule more. But at this point, we're, we're putting together these forums, geographic areas throughout the district, so that I have an opportunity to ask staff what's working, what needs polishing, what's missing. And that's the same three questions that I will be having with the community. So this will be an opportunity to collect some anecdotal information so that when we work, meaning the board and cabinet, on our multi-year vision that takes us 2030, we will have a lot of information, including this anecdotal information that will help us guide our way moving forward. So I'm very excited about those opportunities. I wanted to let the board and community know as part of that. I'm also scheduling individual meetings with elected officials and a variety of community partners that we are slowly getting on the calendar. So I'll be looking forward to my time with James Ramos, Pete Aguilar, Eloise Gomez Reyes, Rosalicio Chauvog, former Senator Connie Leva, city council members. So looking forward just really getting that true authentic feedback from our community. On a different note, I just want to offer my condolences to the Embriani family. As you know, Rich Embriani and Jeff Embriani are two employees in our district and their father Ray, who's been an instrumental figure in, in the city of San Bernardino for many years, passed away. Very good man, I've known him for decades. He will be sorely missed, but our sincerest condolences to the Embriani family. And I reached out to Rich and just let him know, you know, the legacy that, that Ray leaves behind is his family. That was his legacy. So he will truly be missed and we're here to support the Embriani family. The last item I'd like to share today is just as the board has given me the challenge to continue to build upon the greatness of the district and, and having to make some necessary changes that we believe are in the best interest of students. One of the first decisions that I've made here recently is to eliminate one of the assistant superintendent positions that sits vacant. So we've eliminated that assistant superintendent position along with the clerical positions that go with that, which is about a $600,000 expenditure or a line item in terms of funds. We're going to be converting those funds to help support school safety across the district. So if you recall, a couple months ago, we had some of our security colleagues that came down before the board and were pleading for additional support in the area of, of safety. So we will be converting that, those funds, so the high management position into funds that will support our school site. So I know Chief Paulino, he knows that we're going to add six positions and I've asked Chief Paulino to work with our secondary principals to make sure that they work together on assignments and the expectations that we have. So what we want to continue to do is make sure, A, that we're protecting the integrity of the perimeters of our schools during school hours, that we want to continue to have frequent supervision of our restrooms and our blind spots that are unique to every school and their unique geographic setup. And then the third part, which is more mostly important, it was something that Mr. Navarro brought up earlier today, is we want to make sure that we are creating relationships, positive relationships with our students so that we can fend off issues before they escalate to something grander. So I want to make sure that the board knows that we're hearing our community, we're hearing our colleagues, and we're making decisions that we believe are in the best interest of, of our students. So I wanted to report that to the board and to the community. And having said that, I just want to wish everybody a great school year moving forward. It is going to be a great year and every day is a great day and every day is a great day in San Antonio City Unified School District. So, thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Ariano. Very inspiring. We'll move on to 11.0 summary of board members' requests, 11.1 review requests.
The first request is from Ms. Alexander. She requested a presentation on the Footsteps to Freedom Tour. The second request is from Ms. Alexander again. She asked to revisit Savant's request for additional classroom space. Ms. Alexander also requested to agendize discussion for approval and amount of sponsorship for Arrowhead United Way. Consensus was given for that. Ms. Alexander and Ms. Rosales Medina requested to change August 26th board workshop to a different date. Mr. Tillman requested to agendize discussion mandating that the district keep siblings together and eliminate waiting through September. Mr. Tillman requested to agendize an update on the spending of ESSER money. Mr. Tillman requested to agendize discussion of spending funds to replace the outdated vehicles. Ms. Sebals requested to schedule a visit to the Children's Subacute Center. And Ms. Chahuski requested to agendize presentation by Special Education on Subacute Center and what our role is and what more we can do. Consensus was given for that one. That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Board Member Vasquez?
Agendize late start, Ms. Vasquez?
Yeah, I asked to agendize to be able to present for the late start.
You got it.
Second.
Move by Vice President Tillman, segue by Ms. Sebals, meaning adjourned. Thank you, everyone. We are ahead of schedule. Great job to the board and everyone else. Have a fantastic new year. Drive safely home and as always, may God bless you all.